Hi, this is Sean Parker with Fill in the Blank and today we have a guest with us who is running for the Dublin, Ohio School Board. The school board elections this cycle are very, very important. People are paying more attention to school board elections than perhaps ever in the recent history of both education and in politics for some reasons that are pretty compelling and some things that are a little bit volatile. Our guest today is Dr. Ted Sun. Dr. Sun has a PhD in business management as well as a PhD in psychology. So a very rare combination, highly educated intellectual, who is willing to give his time to help make sure that the students of Dublin, Ohio, the families in the community are well represented with someone who knows how to manage and also knows how to understand the thinking processes of children. So, welcome, Dr. Sun. Glad to have you with us. And tell us a little bit about yourself, if you would, and why you're running for Dublin, Ohio School Board?
Sure, Sean. Thank you very much for the introduction and it's an honor to be here to speak to our community about what I'm here and what I hope to accomplish as a possible school board candidate. A little bit about myself, I'm a graduate of Dublin High School when there was only one single high school back in the 1986 to 1990.
Yes.
In the timeframe where most of Dublin was still farmlands and there wasn't that much development. And I went through the high school as the first and only Chinese person in the school district, which taught me a lot about how do you survive in a environment where there wasn't much support systems there from a technology perspective or development perspective. I had to try to survive on my own with everything that was there geared towards the standard student.
Okay.
So, as I graduated Dublin, I went through Ohio State, got two degrees at Ohio State. One was in mechanical engineering and the other one was an MBA. And at that point, my passion for working with people, developing people really got turned on as I learned to manage teams and I saw what's needed and what I didn't really know. So, my passion in education and continued learning led me down the first doctorate in management. And then after that, my mentor said, if you really want to learn how people work and think, go get a PhD in psychology. I said, okay, so that sounds good. So I went and got a second PhD, which isn't heard of. Many people were asking me questions, why? Because I said, the more you learn, the more you know what you don't know. And I had to go know it because that's just who I was. And I still continue to learn, even though I've gotten my doctorate so far and I've published two books. There's so much out there that I'm still learning, even in this process of how do you communicate more accurately? How do you make sure people understand exactly what you stand for and who you are? And that's been the biggest challenge in this election as being an educator. I've never really got into politics and that was never in my intention in my entire life until up to this point. And when I saw my first daughter being born nine years ago, I knew that all of my work and especially in education all over the world, at some point I need to come back and make sure that my daughters get the best education possible and much better than what I experienced in Dublin, even though what I experienced was some incredible lessons that's built the foundation of everything that I've achieved so far. I needed to give back to make sure that they get the best education possible. So, that's why I'm running. It's a consistent passion in education and continue to educate myself and the education system is what I've done across the world in revising and enhancing education systems and now making sure that I give back to the community that gave me a chance to thrive.
That's a great reason. That's, you know, paying it forward is what E. Hayes said is always a great thing to do. And when you have children, it does really open your eyes to what you see for their future in the hope of mankind and moving ahead. So, that's very honorable. There's some things in this race that are very, very, I'll call them hot points, flash points that are occurring out there. But I want to set that basis just a little bit more because kids from Dublin. My son graduated, he attended Dublin Middle School, attended high school, top 50 district by just about every measure that happens in the United States. It is a superlative educational school district. But one thing that we hear a lot about is kids coming out of Dublin are not prepared to deal with kids who don't grow up in Dublin, that the real world is much, much, much different. How can Dublin better prepare kids to face the world of inner-city Columbus, Appalachia, you know, people that are just not as affluent as they are? And does Dublin prepare them for that now or are there things we can do better?
Yeah, to me, there's always things that we can do better. As a university professor, I've seen students come into the university classroom with all kinds of academic capabilities, but their life capabilities, life skills such as prioritization, planning, dealing with stress, trying to prioritize the difference between, you know, going to a social event versus staying home to study. Those typical skills are not often there in a lot of kids. And as we see, you know, we have a ton of people taking student loans and not being able to repay them. The financial literacy aspect is a huge challenge in America. And how do we move that forward? From a basic education system perspective, I see a lot of opportunity for children to really learn the life skills while they're going to our city schools and not just look at the academics. A lot of this isn't necessarily about, let's introduce new curriculum, let's introduce new content, but it's about how we teach and how we engage the students. So, for example, you know, when you're talking about dealing with students from other areas like Appalachia and even other states, we have to start thinking more global. We're in a globalized community of businesses and interactions happening all over the place. You know, with this pandemic has really shown us exactly how connected we are as a world with all these shortages because things aren't being produced in various countries because of the pandemic. And whatever we learn in the basic K through 12 system, we have to give our students the ability to see the globalized environment. And that can be done with things as simple as creating partnerships with schools in other countries so that we expose our students from our classroom to another classroom. And maybe we have a period where we're taught by a professor or a teacher that's living in Africa, that's living in Europe, that's living in Asia. And then we do vice versa to their students and so that we can really integrate our educations to become much, much more global. And the second part in the education that I see can be much, much more better integrated is that our businesses, our local businesses have so much talent. For example, the Dublin Entrepreneurship Center, we have so many incredible entrepreneurs. It's one of the best in the country from a survival perspective. Most entrepreneurs don't survive, especially in the first five years. And Dublin Entrepreneurship Center has a much better success rate than any others in the nation. We have such a great talent base there. Why don't we integrate our education system a lot more with those professionals so that everybody gets to learn about entrepreneurship, about the basic skills they need to have to survive?
Wow. Yeah, so you're talking about something that I've contemplated many, many times. How do we teach our kids to enter the real world, participate in the real world and be successful in the real world? It's kind of where academia meets reality and trying to build that bridge. So, I like that a lot. I like that a lot. Another question that is floating around, this is the hot button question that is happening everywhere. It is critical race theory, CRT for short. What do you know about critical race theory? What's your position on CRT? And is it a good thing, bad thing? Or is, you know, what's your perspective on this?
So, I'll start with my basic principles of looking at the development of the child. CRT in its academic definition as a graduate-level theory taught in law school is not ideal for trying to put it into a K through 12 system. I do not support that. And the main reason behind that is when we look at the development of the child, there are development stages within the human cycle of development. From zero through 12, we're in pre-operational stage. We're trying to figure out what is our finger, where's our hands, how to walk and so on. When we get from two to seven, we're getting to the operational stage where we're just starting to develop some basic logic. That's where we're learning one plus one equals two. And whatever choices we're given, we've got to guide these kids to understand how do we identify ourselves? How do we see ourselves as a child? How do we choose right from wrong? Very, very basic logic that's developed in that world. Once you go into seven to 12 age range, then you're starting to develop some more complex deduction levels where you're starting to get into some basic algebra, basic geometry and so forth. So, from that perspective, we're simply adding too much complexity if we try to add a graduate-level law theory into education from that perspective. Now, I think what we really want as parents for all of our children is what we want is critical thinking. We want our children to be able to look at a piece of information and say, well, let me look at it from this way. Well, let me look at it from that way. And let me critically think, how does that matter to me and how do I apply it today? And what is the impact for me in the long run? All those questions are things that we want every single one of our children to have. What we really want to have is more critical thinking within our school districts so that we can empower children to make those wiser choices moving forward. Where critical race theory is very, very narrow about a legal perspective taught at the graduate level and that doesn't fit in any of the development stages within the cognitive development side.
What about emotion? As we talk about that, you know, we talk about critical thinking, we talk about cause and effect, we talk about an applied approach. But it seems like so much that's happening in our society right now is being driven on emotion. And our kids are opening the paper, they're looking at TikTok, they're looking at all these different medias that are out there that are telling them how they're supposed to feel. Is that good? Is that something that schools should help them manage and to understand? How do we apply that so that kids come out and they can actually deal with their sense of self and their sense of their identity as that self lives and participates in a world that right now seems to have a lot of chaos and confusion?
Great question, Sean. When we look at the development of the emotion, emotional regulation doesn't get fully developed until later teenage years. So, as we inject too many adult concepts and too much confusion into our children, they get really, really confused about who they are. It's horrible for them. So, I always like to tell parents that are working with younger children, hey, let's leave the adult stuff to the adult side. Don't confuse them too much. Teach them what's right and wrong and teach them some basic principles about life. That's about extent to go into it. If you get into very complex concepts, you're going to confuse the heck out of them about who they are, who they're supposed to be in this reality. From an emotional perspective, our schools are partially responsible for the emotional development of our children. But then again, that falls on a very old principle of education. That old principle basically says, when we created education system back in the early 1900, it was about creating employees for the manufacturing environment. Emotions are not part of that equation. Now, as we work towards the knowledge economy or as we work toward globalization, we want people who are emotionally capable of dealing with complex emotions, looking at themselves and saying, who am I? Who do I want to become? And how do I want people to see us? Those conversations requires education to look at it as not only what the schools can do, but also creating a consistent environment where the family environment and the school environment provides a consistent development environment for that child so they can see, wow, everybody's talking to me at the same level at the older age. As we start developing emotional intelligence and so forth, we can start to develop that emotional sense of self and an emotional balance so that, you know, the amount of anxiety, they can deal with that. The amount of depression, we can minimize that. All these various issues are a major problem right now.
Okay, good, good point. And you touched on something, you started to go in a direction, I'm going to ask you to expound on that a little bit. It's the idea, you brought up family. Values are often taught by family. School systems are also espousing some values out there, more or less. Where should the base of values come from for kids? Should they come from their family or should it come from the school system? And is there a way for those two separate institutions, the family institution and the school system institution? Is there a way for them to work together cooperatively for good values? Or is that something that should be more off limits by the school system? What's your thoughts on that general concept?
Sure. That is a topic that I'm very passionate about. I started studying values as a human psychology perspective in 2006. When it comes to values, it has to be a consistent approach for the environment of development for our children. Adults get really confused, so, you know, let's talk about the adult environment for one second. When adults go into the workplace, they're given a shared value statement. And they're told, this is the company's value statement and it's shared. Well, in that process, there's no inclusion. Nobody's asked what their core values are. Most employees never get asked what your core values are before you get employed. So, the conflict between the organizational shared value set, supposedly shared value set versus the individual value set are not a conversation for learning. As a child, this even gets more confusing. When we're growing up, before we enter the school system, children watch the mom and dads and the parents and whatever environment they have that they're acclimated to with its grandparents and so forth. They're looking at how human beings, adults, treat each other and they develop some basic sense of what love is, what respect is, what communication and collaboration may be. They develop those mentalities without even anybody talking to them. They just watch and observe. As they get into a school system, the conversations about value starts to happen. The parents need to be involved in that conversation. If the parents are moving in one direction and the school is moving in another direction, the child is going to get more and more confused. And this was a very obvious conversation. You know, I had this conversation with the Dublin administrators at one point as they were building out an entrepreneurship program. And I told them, when we build out an entrepreneurship program, you have to get the parents involved. Because if you're really good at developing entrepreneurs, well, guess what? What if the parents really want the child to go into university and move on down the corporate track? Go into the corporate environment? Now you've just created an incredible conflict between what the school is teaching versus what the parents want. On the surface, a lot of people say, oh, entrepreneurship is great. They can learn to make money, great. But you better get that 4.5 in order for people to get that degree and enter that high-level university or enter Harvard or whatever university. So, there has to be a collaboration and inclusive environment where parents in the education system from a teacher's perspective are working together to develop values as a team.
So, with that, talking about teachers, bringing up teachers, bringing up, you know, the big question I always have, the autonomy of teachers as a profession? Getting the teachers to buy in and the school system to buy into what that family goal is or what that student's individual goal is, possibly without tracking them too much, but that's a phrase that's gone in and out of education from a teaching standard over the years. Some people say it's good, some people say it's not good. I won't touch that one. But teachers, you know, Dublin has the most highly qualified, highly educated and highly compensated teachers in central Ohio. Some other districts are right there with us. How do you feel our relationship is between our school board and the teachers and also the school board and the teachers' unions, which are two different kinds of things, I believe?
Well, from the school board's perspective, the unions are there to protect the jobs of the teachers and fight for the specific benefits that they want for the teachers to have. That is a long history of unions and how they came about from the Industrial Revolution. From a teacher's perspective, there are many, many different needs that teachers have. So, for example, you know, one of my good friends is a teacher in Dublin and the administration decided to buy the cheaper version of the copiers for the teachers. And all the teachers said, no, 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 continue to buy us the cannons because that's what we've used for the last 20 years and it's been great. Get us the cannons, copiers. And the administration went a different route for the cheaper item on the balance sheet. And when that happened, now the teachers are dealing with a constantly jammed copier, a lot of frustration every time they have to copy something and the maintenance cost associated with that is starting to catch up to if they would have bought a quality-level copier.
Okay.
So, there's a lot of conversations that need to be had where the board needs to have a solid relationship with the teachers and hear their voices specifically based on all the stresses and all the challenges they face on a regular basis. That's something that I feel like the conversations could also be enhanced so that we all move forward as a team, not as, well, teachers see it this way and administration sees it this way or the board sees it this way. I think the school board could be easily a kind of a balance between what the teachers want and what administrations can have so that we can all work as a team as opposed to separate entities.
Okay, makes sense. What are the most pressing needs for Dublin schools in the near future, in the four-year, six-year window?
Well, I think Dublin is in a very good position from a financial perspective. You know, we've been able to maintain a very high level of education from an academic perspective. The biggest issues that I see is starting to get into the area where we're spending money without necessarily looking at the accountability aspects. How do we spend money so that we hire the right people and make sure that the outcomes are there? How do we make sure we continue to invest in tools and softwares and educational models that continue to work and get rid of those that don't work? One of the challenges that I've been brought aware is our reading levels with our children. Third grade, fourth grade, we don't necessarily perform that well. What is happening there? Are we investing in the right type of technology? Are we investing in the right type of methodology in education and how we're teaching our children to read? You know, I'm one of those children that graduated from Dublin hating to read. My reading speed really sucked, especially as an immigrant coming in. I didn't learn any English all the way till the age of 10 was when I started. And when I was in Dublin City Schools, you know, nobody paid attention to it and I always read the Cliff Notes, always found the set tapes of the textbook. So, I don't have to read the textbook because my reading skill was so slow.
So, I gotta jump in. You came to the United States at age 10?
Yes.
Didn't speak English?
Nope.
And went on to obtain not one, but two PhDs, a master's degree along the way as well. That's impressive. That's very impressive, just my compliments on that. I'm sorry. And I cut you off, so if you want to continue that thought, if you still have it in your mind, if not, I've got more questions for you, so.
Sure. I mean, just to kind of finish the thought there, whatever is working, we need to make sure we continue to support that and we need to critically assess what is not working. And one of the last board meetings I attended, I watched a school staff member present, here's what we're doing in the field of diversity, equity and inclusion. And when I look at the board and the questions they ask, none of them critically challenged, how do we get better? What is there? What else is there can we do? We're spending money on this area. How do we make sure that we address the key issues that we really mean to address? Not one board member asked those questions. For me, as a school board member or a school board candidate, we need to make sure those critical questions get asked and answers are there. So, we hold the district accountable for whatever money we're going to spend. We are going to get those results that's going to give our district in a better place.
Now, I just picked up on something. You said that not one school board member presently addressed those questions. Are they avoiding those questions? Because those are the questions of the day.
Yes.
Inclusion, participation. You know, down in Upper Arlington, they're having big questions about sexual orientation and how they deal with that. They have unisex restrooms that they built their new high school with. And it caused a, I mean, almost riots down there. It was unbelievable, the way that the people were going about that. Are those, do we need our school boards to be get along for society and to have those appearances? Or is it okay to ask the difficult question even though you might not like the answer?
From a systemic perspective, challenging people to be better is always the right educational approach. When I look at any kind of leaders, whether it's in a school board or a corporation, those leaders need to ask the tough questions. What does this get us today? What will happen if we make this decision? Which stakeholders are we going to impact? How do we engage those stakeholders ahead of time so that we're not using a traditional problem-solving approach? Everybody loves to say, oh, I'm a problem solver. I always ask them, are you solving problems because you need problems or are you learning to prevent problems from happening? As a school board, before these decisions are made, we need to be significantly more inclusive so that we get input from our various communities and get people to collaborate together as a whole to make collaborative decisions as opposed to a very small group making decisions in their little, you know, in their little rooms so that these decisions can really upset one group or another. It's the process of making decisions that's going to be the biggest issue. Not necessarily that the content's going to always come and change, but the management of the process of decision-making needs to be a lot more inclusive.
Okay. Dublin has some of the nicest school facilities in central Ohio, if not the nicest. The tax rates in Dublin because of the house values are enormous. People pay, many people pay over $20,000 and $30,000 a year in property taxes mainly to support the schools. Eighty-plus percent of that goes directly to the school business, to the schools themselves. Are we overpaying taxes in Dublin? Are we getting our money's worth? And is it okay to take a look at whether or not we should be looking at increasing taxes or should we maintain taxes at the current level? Or should we look at ways to economize and possibly lower taxes for people? Any thoughts on any of that?
When I look at the tax question, there's a lot of financial accountability that has to happen when we're managing a $320 million budget in the school system. We need to really critically look at how are we spending that money? Whenever I look at budgets for any business, whether it's a school district or corporation, I always challenge people to think, why are we talking about budgets? Typically, budgets is a starting point for how much money do I have to spend in this area? We need to look at it as a ROI where we look at the return on investment. If we're going to spend this money, what do we get out of it? And there are many things that when I look at the balance sheet, when I look at the different things on the budget, I ask myself these questions. Why are we spending money on this? What does it get us? Does it get us a better education? Does it help develop our children better? And if not, why are we spending money on it? So, I believe there are many areas of opportunity where we can spend smarter and where we can critically look at what is working, what is not, and how do we invest our money in a much more inclusive way so that everybody can contribute? So, it's not just, you know, individuals looking at this, but as a collective whole, how do we move forward so that our tax dollars are being spent responsibly?
I like that. I like the ROI approach because oftentimes we put money in a box and we say, go spend the box instead of saying, what's the result? What's our intended consequence from spending that money? Do we progress or do we regress from that? So, that's a really good look at it. And clearly, you have a PhD in business, so you understand that better than the average person on the street. So, well done. With that, what else have we not asked you about? What else can you tell us? We're coming up on our time here about Dr. Ted Sun. One thing I forgot to ask, I want to ask, you have round signs. I've never seen a candidate with round signs in any campaign that I can think of. They're novel, they're unique, they probably cost a lot more. Tell us about the round signs.
So, to me, again, you know, the cost, it doesn't really matter as long as it's an investment, the return on the investment. The round signs to me represent two major aspects. Number one, my intention is to unite our community because we're so divided. Round signs has no sides. I'm not taking sides regardless of what political aspect, what mask, non-mask and so forth. My goal is to listen to our community and then gather them together so that we can co-create solutions to make our district better. That's the first piece. Second piece, our goal is to develop a well-rounded individual, a well-rounded student. We have a Dublin learner profile that has already outlined exactly what those aspects are. Our goal is to develop that round, well-rounded individual. And having the expertise to look at the curriculum, to look at what elements that we can do to integrate into our education system from a content perspective, as well as how the teachers teach from a social, emotional learning perspective, to make sure that these things are done correctly, that's going to be one of the key aspects that a school board member will have, will need to bring. And I have that expertise. I want to bring that to our school district so that we make sure we graduate students that are very well-rounded and a full student.
Great, great. Anything else you want to tell us about yourself?
So, one of the things that's kind of jumped to my mind is the fiscal responsibility. You touched a little bit on the taxation part, but I think, you know, whenever we look at the fiscal responsibility aspect of a district, managing $230 million is a huge task. How much of that is spent on salary versus equipment versus capital and so forth? We need to make sure those things are done in an effective way. You know, I remember when I was given a task of managing one of the projects in the university, I was giving, or we were, the university was giving a million euros to educate 100 people in Eritrea. And we had to figure out, how do we create a new business model to operate so that we can take that a million? A million sounds a lot, but when we talk about 100 people in an MBA program in a developing country that don't have technology, their internet or even the electricity goes down from weeks to months at a time, we have to send my professors in there. I have to figure out how to make that business model work and make it so that it doesn't break the school, but these people still get the education necessary. And that's just one single project. So, having the expertise to go in and look at the budget and making sure that we are spending wisely and making sure that whatever we spend on the budget is worth the outcomes for our children. Not for somebody's job, not for some toys that somebody gets to play with, but goes back to our children getting the benefit of that expenditure.
So, along that line, my understanding is school superintendents generally come up through schools of education, not necessarily schools of business management. You have an expertise in business management. Does Dublin or should, well, let me ask it this way. Should school districts employ people with very strong business management skillsets for the operations of schools? And putting measurements, ROIs so to speak, that's a business term. In education, I believe the word's often outcome. Should that be married into the way that we measure the success of a highly performing school district?
I think there's definitely merit to integrating that. The educational outcomes is the tangible outcomes from an educational perspective. The business outcome is managing the financial and the ROI piece of it. We have a treasurer, every school district has a treasurer that is a finance guy. He understands the numbers. That person really manages all the day-to-day He understands the numbers, uh that person really manages all the day-to-day operations of how much money gets spent and where it gets spent on. But the connection between the financial aspect and the educational side is often quite lacking, they're not always in conversation with each other. So like the example I gave at the all the schools with, you know, purchasing a cheaper copier. The stress levels and what the teachers are dealing with and then that flows back down to the students, that conversation doesn't happen on a regular basis. So if we were to make some systemic changes, it would be great for people that we hire on the financial side of it. Also have some uh more integration between the skill set from an educational perspective. So that those two are a good marriage between the two.
Okay, makes sense, makes good sense. Dr. Sun, one, one question that I have also is regarding this, the 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 diversity group that's out there. And they have chains of communication, some open on social media. And when their people make comments, they really get, they get an easy pass when they say things that don't really seem to be. Accurate or in line or possibly PC, when you say something, you're held to a different standard. When in fact, you're probably the only person bringing diversity into the equation, why do you think that is?
Well, I don't really know the full answer to that one, um you know, I know from my personal experience, I've come from that. Unique place where I've been marginalized, I come from a a place where I went to Dublin and I was only Chinese student. In the district with all different types of challenges that comes with that from the the teachers, from the the fellow students and so forth. I know very well what that feels like and when I look at the totality of my experiences. Like, you know, somebody coming to one of my meet and greets and saying, why don't you go get a job as a, why don't you teach for a district? And 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 those things continue to mount up where I went to another event that they didn't even wanna recognize me as a candidate. You know, there's a lot of different efforts that I'm experiencing in this journey that is extremely hurtful. And they're just initially trying to silence me. When I look at the latest development and how someone twisted my words and and basically made statements that I did not make. In social media and then having people come against me for it, I don't know if that's another form of unconscious bias that's happening. Or that's just another instance of racism, or that's just political games people play, but regardless of what that is. They're doing some very hurtful things to try to stop me and I wanna make sure to let everybody out there know, nobody is gonna silence my voice. And I will always stand up for those that need as helping hand, those that are marginalized. Those that need to be witnessed so that they can have a voice and I'm always gonna stand for that no matter what happens.
Good, good, yeah, I always, I always hope that we only measure a man based on his character and based on his mind. You seem to be a person of good character and you certainly have a good mind.
Thank you, Sean.
Dr. Ted Sun, can you tell us how people can follow you on your social media or other uh areas? How they can stay in touch with what you're doing?
Sure, um I'm easy to find, you can Google Dr. Ted Sun, you'll find my website, my university. But my website for my uh campaign is DrSunfortheNumberFourInclusiveEducation.com. And that kind of goes back to all the inclusive nature of what we wanna do for our district. Uh and I'm also on Facebook as well and on uh just starting to learn how to use Twitter, I've not been a uh a user of Twitter too much. But just kind of starting to move in that direction.
Okay, great, so with that, uh thank you for coming in, Dr. Ted Sun, a student, a graduate of Dublin. Someone who grew up in the school system, in the community, knows the community and is willing to give back to the community. Returning to Dublin with multiple postgraduate degrees and willing to do the hard job. Of helping kids be successful, thank you for that and thank you for joining us on Fill in the Blank.
Yep, thank you for having me, Sean.